Everything all there.
It is preparing to be.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're good. We're good.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. We're. I'm bored now. This is a. Open to the meeting of the regular session of the mayor and council city of Disney County. State Arizona on Tuesday, February sixth, twenty twenty four at seven oh three P M. Our counting chambers. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Giacamino is excused. Councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Kim Budge. Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mal Suid is excused. Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
Stephen J. Pocken, City Manager, Nina Williams, Deputy City Clerk. Matthew Gurney, Public Works Director, Logan Dodd, Operations Manager. Tim Cox, Police Chief. Jay Ritchie, Deputy Police Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you. For a moment silence tonight, do a minute of personal reflection and then say the budget regions of everybody to stand. Well, thank you. Just for announcement tonight, I'm actually proud to announce that we will be holding a groundbreaking ceremony. For our new city hall. This will be next Monday, February twelfth, twenty twenty four at ten A M. And you want and everybody's invited. We'll take a few shovel pulls and everything is the construction company is going to be standing up. All of their whatever it takes to go trailers and so on and so forth and get at it. So we had a first. Pre-construction meeting the other day. They're excited about it. We're excited about it. And I think it will be great to bring it back to one where it belongs and that. It will have a flag one inch behind me to say congratulations to the one should we have a full council member. So. That's it's the people's house. It's not ours. All right, moving on. There's nothing from call the public signed up, so I'll move into general business, first order of general business of accounts payable. The motion for a county, please.
I move that we pay accounts payable on the amount of four hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and twenty nine dollars and sixty five cents. Second.
We have a motion second to approve accounts payable. Have anything that we need some clarification on? Seeing now we got a motion second to approve accounts payable amount of four hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and twenty nine dollars and sixty five cents always in favor, ten point by seven. I.
I.
Oppose, nay. There are none. The eyes have. We'll move on now. Item two, it's the consent agenda. We have items A through E. There's one approval of the minutes from January sixteenth. We got an approval for a police and fire advisory appointment. And then we have two reappointments, one for the airport advisory and one for the police and fire advisory. And finally, number eight would be a special event liquor license submitted submitted by the Friends of the Warren Mall Park. For events being held on Saturday, April one, April sixth, twenty twenty four, and Sunday, April seventh, and seven A M, seven P M. Would anybody like anything? Please. Further discussion. Seeing none, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed items A through E.
Second.
Got a motion second to approve account. The consent agenda has shown seven, eight, three, all those in favor. So anybody that's saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. There are none. The motion passes. Eyes have it. We'll move on now to whole business. Whole business is item three. It's a discussion of possible approval of ordinance O dash twenty four dash O one. This is an ending zoning code. Of the city of Disney, Article seven, sign regulations, section seven point two point six. Not going to read the rest of it, but it's basically what we discussed last week. This is the second part of it. There's already been a public hearing on it through the E N Z and then the open day. Does anybody have any questions on or lack further clarification of what this is? I call it the city, the city sign situation where people are putting up their own signs and thinking they control part of city. I can have Emmanuel come up and give further instructions or we're good on it. All right, then I'm going to ask for a motion and yeah, somebody can read the big one, right?
I am looking to approve ordinance O dash two, order that is B R one, amending the zoning code of the city of Disney. Article seven, sign regulations, section seven point two point six. General requirements applicable to all signs by adding sub series H. Prohibited replacing the signs films that mislead the public in the median of public street parking. It's private or reserved parking, providing for the appeal of conflicting ordinances providing their severability.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve item three, which is ordinance O dash twenty four O one. We will call these.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. She passes four zero, so move. We're moving on. This is all new business now, so we'll move on item four, the new business. Item is the study of the possible approval of resolution R dash twenty four O one. This is amending the building inspector section for city fee schedules. Mr. Ward. Might be your last duty, but welcome on. I won't be nice to see that tonight.
This is this is the amended fee schedule. And with the expert with evaluation, that is not going to be the cost per people's permit. That's going to be the valuation that determines the value of the permits. And we had adjusted it's been a while and we're giving away a lot of money and. Most construction is going for over two hundred square foot.
Right.
And we, there's there's so much base, we've discussed that all before. If there's any questions, I will answer those and then raising the. Changing the the way that we analyze people for for not getting obtaining permits. This is a, this is a. A process that's been used by the city of the city of service, but for over ten years. And seem to be working for them. I think it's time for us to try it because there's some people who who don't like getting permits.
Yes, that and that just causes you more time and us more. Money that could be spent on it.
Yep.
Yes, I looked at other cities and could see what they were charging for splurging the bill at home. I mean, this is like you said, the evaluation. This is not what we actually charged them with. It's based on that evaluation and it seemed to be right in line. I brought one to my sister city and I showed them council members tonight. We're not even in the ballpark of that one, but but outside of that. I think this seems reasonable that a hundred and sixty dollars square foot. You can't really build an old, old at that rate. I think we're being reasonable in that. So that's my. Two cents worth in any open perspective from council. If not, I'll. I'll move to approve running through R dash twenty four O one, making this and the building inspector section for the city fee schedule.
Right.
And a motion to second to approve resolution R dash twenty four O one, amend the building inspector section of fee schedule. To resolution. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. There are none. The eyes have it, so move. Thank you. I'm fine. Discussion about the approval of another resolution R dash twenty four O two. This is amending the police section of the base at the city fee schedule. I got a few more of those coming up, so. Chief Cox, this is going to pass down with what we hear with our new body cameras. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm on it. If anybody has any questions. Our explanation would be good.
Hopefully Steve has my nose. Hey, thinking of what this is, is last year, the Arizona State Legislature passed a. New state law in regards to video recordings and public information requested regarding surrounding those recordings. And it states that a city may charge up to forty six dollars per work hour for those videos. So we're just asking to adjust our charge to be in line with the state law. Considering the amount of man hours that goes into it, the thumb drive CDs that we had to purchase, the research, the redacting, the software licensing and all that, if you remember that from the body camera discussion. It just helps the city not eat as much cost as what we normally would without the fee schedule. And the police department operates off of many statutory schedules as it is. This is just in line with that.
Open for discussion. Do we have anyone?
Do we charge at any time before?
We didn't have body cameras. We do charge for reports and stuff according to state law schedules. It's nothing new. This is just a new thing for body cams. Prior to this legislative change, we could not charge.
Right.
But we didn't have cameras, so we. We never had them, so I never really think.
And it's a statewide issue because there are other departments that have had body cams for quite a while and they go through. A lot of time and expense for redactions when they get public records for body cam videos. An example of that was when fire staff implemented their body cam policy back in two thousand and fifteen. Shortly thereafter, they had an officer involved shooting where an officer was killed on duty. It garnered national attention and they got inundated with requests for body cam videos for all of the officers responding. For the officer who was shot for dozens of officers and body cam. And it took a substantial amount of time for the process and for the party to provide those videos. So it's a necessary change of the legislature. Solid assists communities like this. Yeah, because it probably a small portion of those costs. It doesn't, it probably likely won't cover the entire. Cost of providing those in a two conventional public furniture class. It allows us to to get someone that.
Right now, the only ones that can do any editing or redaction of body camera footage is myself and my administrative secretary. We're the only ones that have access to. So if we get a request that I have to go in and pull a video and go from. Very beginning, we get a request at very end, I give you a video and that video requires redaction as Joe was saying. Depending on the nature of the incident, if it's a one hour video clip, you're probably looking at anywhere between fifteen to twenty hours just to get that video out.
And just for the record, we don't charge victims of crimes.
No, victims will never be charged with fees to have anything related to their kids, nor will be prosecutors.
I want to make sure that was stated, so if the public had any questions about it.
Good morning together. We're not having the victims who's trying to recuperate some of them. Hours. Any more? Yes. Any other questions? I will again a motion for item.
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty four dash zero three, amending the police section of the city fee schedule.
Yeah, I'm waiting a second to approve resolution R dash twenty four O two, amending the police section of the city fee schedule. Always in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. There are none. The eyes have it, so move. Moving on, we have one more approval of resolution R dash twenty four O four. This is an ending between mine section of the city fee schedule. Mr. Brown.
We think we made a mayor and council. And looking at changing the prices for the tours. It's time to take a look at beauty inflation and future mine repairs. I have done. A little bit of marketing research of nineteen attractions in Southern Arizona. And we fit right, we'll fit right there in the middle. On the prices.
Two dollars more for normal adult versus.
Yeah, yeah.
And and more children.
Yeah.
Our, because people know that city residents that are accompanied by three or more are free and and so. And residents still, yeah, just so people know they can enjoy themselves of their resident. Questions?
Just one, and and I'm just asking that question to give you an example of what we're faced with. Doug and I talked about replacing batteries on motors. And. What was your last purchase for for battery for one of the motors? How much did it cost?
Six thousand dollars. Yeah, well, there's a fan coming on that, so.
Yeah, there's a fan coming. They're a little bit more than the battery in your car.
Yeah. But but it looks like they're playing it all the time in my house. It looks like it's been busy, you know, pretty well and really happy. That's good. Now we just got to get our prices there and beat everybody else's. Still a lot, still a lot. All right, any other questions from anyone? I'll move make a motion to approve resolution R dash twenty four O four, amending the queen mine section of the city fee schedule.
Second.
And a motion to second to approve R dash twenty four. O four, amending the fee schedule for the queen mine tour. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. There are none. The eyes have it, so move. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the other, the other side of the coin.
Okay, this is discussion of possible approval of purchase.
From a spend.
Some kind of just sound. Yeah, no, I guess in Doug terms.
Spend a mine van for the queen mine board. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, this is the van that she's been on, the the mine tour, and it's been almost, you know, it's been in two thousand and eight. And it's ran continuously. The reason I want to have one on the site is it takes about twenty weeks to get a fan. And if we were to use the van, we have to shut down for twenty years.
And that'd be that's due to the.
The ventilation.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the air movement to that one. Yeah. Just let's have one of them swap it out.
If somebody knows, that's thirty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars. It's going to take a lot of two dollar raises.
Yeah, no.
Well, no, I don't know what it's costing when why would we increase prices by two bucks some. Find the thing together. More comments? Questions? I want to take a motion for a new somehow spend up to see. I know, but I like I like. Spend up.
Hey, well, place your ready for.
Yes.
I move to purchase a spend joint mine van from Southern Georgia. For the total amount of thirty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve. The purchase of a the new spend run van. For the queen mine door. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The eyes have it, so move. Thanks, I'm back. All right, moving on. Item A, just discussion of possible approval of the professional service agreement between Sandec Consulting Services. To assist the Hillcrest Brownville Nina. Here we are again with. Come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have, we'd like to enter into agreement with Dave Laney. This is a third part of oversight again for the EPA grant. So we have the mitigation, we have the air quality control. And then this role will be the third party who coordinates all of that because they have the expertise to do so. It's a nine thousand, seven hundred dollar contract. It comes directly out of the grant, so it's no, no cost to us. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Sure, just not a part of meeting the federal one. Stop.
And they allowed us to do the first portion and the first quarter without this. And so now it's time to go ahead and kick it in.
Questions? Comments? We've had a motion for item eight.
I move to approve the professional services agreement with Sandec Consulting Services. To assist with the Hillcrest Brownville Nina. Second.
Motion to second to approve with official agreement with Sandec Consulting Services for Hillcrest. John, there are plenty of all those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The eyes have it, so move.
Thank you.
Amendment recoup money and extra spending. All right, item nine. Now we're moving on to the discussion of possible approval of another resolution R dash twenty four O three. This is supporting the Disney. Bus transit program and the application for funds to operate said system.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is again, I've come to you. And again, we do this yearly and this is to continue the Disney bus transit program. This is so we can go out to apply for. Funds to operate our system. So we're going to be, we have a public hearing on February fourteenth. And we put up with that to visit review of other newspapers for legalities of what we have to do with for the grant. One of the things just to highlight. For this is we are asking for another bus. And some carports for a couple of buses. Because, you know, loud with the weather all the time, so we're trying to get some under but under carports as much as we can, so. As one of them, but this is just so we can go out to to apply for the grant. There's no money involved in this. It's just resolution.
Will we build after shops?
Yes, yes.
Well, we got the the lift to lift them up. Now we just need to place the top, right? Okay. Comments on, it's a good day to plus. I mean, we want to keep it, keep it going. Anybody? Well, I'll just make a. Motion to approve resolution R dash twenty four O three, supporting the Disney Bus Transit Program and the application for funds to operate said bus.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve resolution R dash twenty four O three for the Disney bus. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. There are none. The eyes have it. All right, Johnny Werritt over on item ten. This is discussion of possible approval to purchase the software upgrade. For chem sites using money provided by the Disney Foundation. Go ahead, Matthew.
Yes, this is for the Evergreen Cemetery. That software that we, we have, sen sites is pronounced. We have that already. This is just a additional software to help. People that want to find their loved ones in cemetery. If they can get our, if we get this, if they get our website and put in names, their names, and it. Will direct them to very close to where it's supposed to be. Right now, it's just the row. And the number. And so you have to kind of walk and figure out, you know, exactly which one it is. With this, it would be a lot more direct. And this is. Provided paid for, this would be paid for by the Disney Foundation.
This is what guy costs?
Yeah. Yes, there isn't any return, is there?
No, right. I think I went on there and they actually have a. A Google map system where you can kind of walk towards it, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Questions, comments?
I know.
Oh, go ahead.
You can focus up at home.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, you can get on the city website and it has it there for anyone.
It's a link to get on.
Yeah, a link, yes. Thank you.
So my question is. How far back or is the information going to go? Because didn't we lose some information in the fire?
Yeah, I know we lost some. This will, we already have some sites. Like I said, it will just integrate with what we have already. They have gone back and have tried to, we've had people go out, volunteers and walk row by row. Logging where we don't, where any places that we might have lost. So we have been reacquiring those as we as we have time and have we have volunteers do that. So this would just link in with the software we already have. And it would.
Make it easier to.
Better, better the soft, the system that we have.
And everything's pretty accurate, you would say, as far as information?
Yeah, you.
Google Maps accurate?
It is probably pretty close to Google Maps accurate, yeah. Yeah, whereas it's, it's a lot closer than where we are. Because right now it'll tell you the row, like, so if you're. Over by the cannon, they'll tell you, okay, you have to go, this is the row, but you have to figure out where in this row it is right now. You have no idea. Where it is. This will tell you the actual number you go and should be able to tell you, okay, it's right, you're right there. Almost like driving directions, but for the cemetery.
So will it direct? Because there's a lot that, you know, there's the Alps, there's the Serbian, there's, will it have that kind of? You know, if you know your family's like in the Catholic century or the Serbian. But will it, can you put that in there and kind of pinpoint?
You'll be able to put their name.
That's okay.
That's done by name.
Yeah, done by name. Yes, man.
I try to put a name that brings up a whole bunch of names from the, like the last name. There might be a whole bunch of.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and you put in the first name, Howard Junior or.
Your last name, show here what, yeah, what what is available to pick. Okay, you want more?
And also make me, if there's no other name?
If if it, whatever we have on our. In our, in our system currently, if it shows that that person was in the military, it'll show that.
This is not gracious to have fun.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Yeah, something paid for by the, thank you, the, from the. Disney Foundation, so.
Yeah, thank you for the questions.
Any other questions or? Motion or motion?
I move to approve the purchase of Sunsite Software. Second.
Motion second to approve the purchase of Kimsite Software, the amount of four thousand dollars contributed by the Disney Foundation. Cemetery. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. There are none. The eyes have it, so move. And the last one for public works. This will be approval of the R F P of plumbing and filter upgrades. Plumbing, what, community pool? Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you. So we went out to bid for. Our plumbing and filter upgrades to the Disney pool. We had one bidder, plastic pools. And they gave us in that bid a couple options. We did not. Two, well, two were, two were options. He had option one and option two, if you look at the bid valuation. And so we are going with, we we met with, we talked with them and they both have same warranties. And they were both comfortable with both. They just wanted to give an option. So we'll be going with option two, which is the gandy equipment. And then with the other two prices that the pool pump, sun server, aqua soul controller. And that comes out to your, when remember that's on the C I F, which is forty four thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars and ninety cents.
Good.
Yes.
The one other reason I heard was that the gandy stuff's available immediately where the other, they could be waiting weeks and weeks.
Yes.
We don't want to wait.
So they're not saying. So they can say, um, with the Jandy, they get it within roughly ten days.
Yeah.
The pentair, nine days. So, um, that was a very big, okay, thank you.
That, I didn't want to have to tell you, so that's what I heard, so I just wanted to bring it up, so let you know that we're moving forwards as expedition three as we can, and, uh, I think this is the last, besides APS, the last. Look, and you're gonna meet with them?
We've already went with them.
Oh.
Uh, we, we lived me with them, um, I guess I didn't.
Other, absolutely.
Um. Met with them yesterday, I believe. Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't buy it this week, it's been already, um.
Come on, it's Tuesday.
So we met with them and we had Kimberly Horn on, on the phone, we had, um, Jim's Electric, APS, and then us on there. We were able to figure out exactly what, what APS needed, there's paperwork, um, that they needed, and I as, as candid as I could and as nicely as I could lay down, I need this now. We can't be messing around, we gotta get this. Um, and they, so that it does look like they should be able to get everything done by April, before April first.
Okay.
So, um, and then we did have, yes, I was just gonna suggest that, um, uh, give the contact information for APS to Mayor and I so that we can remind them every time we talk to them. And I will do that.
Publish this.
I also, uh, we are continuing to have a bi-week, a bi-weekly meetings with them. We set them all, we already set up the schedule and said we were going to stay in contact. Um, so we can push, I am pushing them as hard as I can. Um, and then if nothing else, I will have, I'll, I'll let you guys be pushing. Um, we also had, um, American, um, leak detection come out, uh, and test our pipes. Uh, they, they came back good for the sidewalls uh, that were in question, that had been cut off years ago, and we have no idea, so that is a good thing. Um. So when we had talked with Classic Pools, um, we told, we let them know about that, and they were very happy about that as well.
They're gonna put those back in service.
Yes.
All right. Forging ahead.
And we did clean the pool, uh, power washed the pool, uh, last week, um, and get, and cleaned it up, getting ready for, um, to get it in shape.
Did, once we, I come over tomorrow or tonight and sign this, did they give you a start date when Classic might commence?
As soon as I can get this to them, they will order.
Okay. All right, that sounds like a good update. More questions from anyone? So, yeah, it was a, uh, three ton rock, we've been pushing up the hill, but I think on the, on the press now, so let's, um, we don't have, we'll keep going, but I think it'll roll down the other side pretty quick, so I'm happy about that.
Yes.
Well, this is, we have to pull all the way down.
All right, this is actually, this is actually why I'd love to make the motion, my, my, my. Move to approve your warrant, RFP plumbing and filter upgrades, the Disney Committee, full of classic pools, Inc.
Second.
And a motion in the second to approve the, uh, plumbing and building upgrades to our pool. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Not here any days, I don't think they would. Ayes have it, so moved, thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. It's a, it's a good meeting. All right, quickly moving on to the last couple of items, this is, oh, uh, item twelve, discussion of possible approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Cochise County for election supply and services. Uh, who wants, it's basically what we do every year.
Yep.
Which is we have to hold an election and we have to pay them to hold that for us. Um, Ashley's not here, but she's arranged all this, and I'm pretty sure it's just standard.
Yes, sir.
Seventy five cents per voter. Um, questions, people, if you want to get reelected? And so this is, uh, has a to be determined overall amount because it's seventy five percent per registered voter, and we don't, um, last year was fifteen hundred and sixty five dollars were passed, so that'll be, uh, in the primary and twenty four hundred were passed in the general, so it'll be somewhere in that area. So we have to move the county because they're going to hold the election.
Fair. Yes, also, I just wanted to let, look at the, the council know, uh, Ashley's aware that there is legislative action that may become, that may have been, been changed this year's primary date by one week.
Oh, yeah.
From August sixth to August, or to July thirtieth. Um, which may have an impact on certain dates and stuff, but it'll get, it, maybe the idea will be amended to address those issues and concerns where they're still waiting, it's likely they're, they're still building and being fast tracked with emergency measures, uh, so that they can, uh, either go in place or, or get, get approved or get vetoed.
So, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Cochise County Election Services. Um, this agreement will provide assistance for the city's, not necessarily thirty August sixth or election, but as determined.
For the election dates as determined.
And, okay, the election dates as determined, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, did anybody else have anything else they'd like to discuss? All those in favor, signify, oh, I need that second.
Second.
Second, to move the, move the intergovernmental agreement with Cochise County for election services, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name, the ayes have it. And, uh, last overall business will be a discussion of possible approval to donate the city's excess dumpsters to, to the city of Mexico, which happened these some month or so ago, I guess, the, yeah, it's been that our neighbor not, we didn't need them all, and we're still sitting out there collecting water, dust, and lower stuff, so, hey, I'm gonna record the city.
Well, thank you, um, I knew you were gonna punt. About time, so, no, you're gonna punt the date of the city.
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
So, um, the recommendation is to donate three hundred and fifty, well, I used dumpsters to the city of Bakwashi, New Mexico, not Cochise, no, Bakwashi. And I, I know this because I went to an elegant, our staff this afternoon asked her to donate support me. Uh, respill it. So, anyway, these are the same dumpsters that we already donated to Bakwashi, okay? They took what they wanted or thought they could use and the rest remained there. And, uh, of course, it's in our best interest to get rid of them, uh, because they just collect things. And, um, and it's in their best interest to take it because they don't have it, so. Um, they, through the mayor, uh, we received a letter from the mayor of Bakwashi, and um, we determined that six, we donated it once, we can donate it again. Hopefully this time they need three hundred and fifty, so. Anyway, staff recommends that you approve the, um, um, donation of the surplus dumpsters. Any questions or comments?
Would they take them up?
Yes, yes, they, that's, the, the terms are, are that they can get them all, and they move across the board. That's, there's, at their expense. So it's a true donation, so I'm gonna also punt to somebody.
I move to approve the donation of three hundred and fifty used surplus dumpsters to the city of Bakwashi, and. Second.
One day, I have a motion to say about the, our excessive dumpsters, uh. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close name, hearing none, the ayes have it. And I'm willing to, uh, say an energy point.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm gonna yield the balance of my time to the city attorney, uh, who will give you an update on today's hearing with the justice court.
Oh, okay.
magistrate court.
Yeah.
We plead fair with me, it's a short, short, but. Uh, and I just wanted to, to get the council up, we, uh, we did have a, uh, a hearing today in magistrate court on the thing that the, um, a total enforcement abatement issue on, on a property that is, uh, been an ongoing issue, um, for at least the last ten years. The documents that were provided to, uh, introduce them to the case, uh, through Joe Ward and Xavier LaVigas, uh, as the city's witnesses, they did a very good job answering questions and, um, that shows that, you know, the city's been working on trying to abate this issue for, for at least ten years. Um, we took much longer than expected with many of the attempted legal arguments and, uh, from, from the defendant, but ultimately we received an order, the, the court is going to approve an abatement order. Uh, however, the court will allow the, the individual, uh, an additional hundred and twenty days to to try to abate the issue before the city goes in, um, which has a benefit for the city, the city doesn't have to incur a cost uh, to do the abatement, if he does follow through and, and abates the issues. And then we'll get them done within the next four months. Um, anything that's not done within that time period, the city will have the authorization, it's going to resolve to the property and to abate that nuisance and clean it up. You know, the city, what property? Uh, by the address. On your trail, on your trail.
Yeah.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, you're a trail.
All right, um, anything else from the city manager?
Um, just to, once again, um, you know, thank that just, um, our, um, building, uh, inspection staff, uh, Joe and Javier are here, um, they did a great job of presenting and collecting all the evidence over ten years or more, uh, of, of this issue, uh. One of the neighbors did come and, and testified, um, at, at trial at, at, uh, Joe's, uh, request, and, um, everything went pretty well, so I'm pretty happy with the outcome. We're hoping that, uh, you know, the follow-up rule will be as good, um, as, as the hearing went, so. Um, and that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, and I have one last announcement, talking about our building inspector. By the time we meet again, we'll be down one, so. I understand that Joe Ward is retiring on the fourteenth of, which is next Wednesday. So, um, I kind of waited to the end, but I knew this was gonna come up, so I, I want to, uh, thank him for his service and the many years that he's spent, it's a very tough job, because it's kind of like a police officer, when they show up, you always go, ah, why does he, you know, what you gonna do to me? And Joe's handled it very nicely, um, and for the most part, it's, uh, it's, it's a very tough situation to tell somebody you gotta do something different, or it's gonna cost my money, or, or, or the many things, and, uh, so it's a, it's a job that, that's very important, and I just wanted to, uh, to thank him for his service, and there'll be a, there'll be a little announcement about anybody of us that wanted to show up to say thanks to, and, uh, on the fourteenth. So, hey, thank you, Joe, and you know what? We, I don't have to. Why don't we let you walk out?
He was great.
Everybody wants a hug now, Joe.
Anyway, now, since I don't have my, uh, person who's saying we are adjourned, I have to make the motion that we adjourn. I have a motion to take it to the general, make say, or simply say aye.
Aye.
Uh, so moved, we are adjourned.